I'd like to call the open session of the City of Canyon Lake City Council meeting on, what is this, March 2nd, I believe, to order. It's now 6:32, I believe. So, without ado, let us begin. Can I get a roll call for the open session, please? Somebody?
Sure. Councilmember Erin Krantz.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Zeit.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Hagerty.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
All are present.
I guess we should have. Well, here we go. I've got two documents to look at here. Okay, let's, can we have the invocation by Brittany?
Good evening. If you bow your heads with me as we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are and for your promises and that you keep your promises, that you are faithful to us. We thank you for the beautiful city of Canyon Lake that you've provided. We thank you for this country that we live in. I lived before you tonight. Our servicemen and women who selflessly serve our country, Lord, and fight for our freedoms. I thank you for local servicemen and women, Lord, and law enforcement and in fire. I ask for your continued provision over them, God, for your safety and protection. I pray, God, that you would be with them as they answer calls of safety and service. I pray for each individual here tonight, Lord, that your will would be done, that your clarity would be upon everyone, that the word shared tonight, Lord, would honor and glorify your name, that there would be good communication, that words would be received well, Lord, and that you would continue to bless our beautiful city the way that you always have, Lord. We trust in you so much and we are so thankful for who you are, what you've done, and what you continue to do in our lives. It's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen.
Erin, would you mind leading us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you approve the agenda, I'd like to ask that you take several items out of order, and let me explain to you why. I realize that you have a new agenda format tonight that Mayor Pro Tim Hagerty requested where this committee and council reports are first. However, in an effort to determine who your staff will be throughout that and other items, if you could please consider section eight point, or item 8.6 and 8.7 after public comments, as well as item 8.8, it would be very helpful to the order of the rest of the meeting.
Without objection.
One additional item. Can we please pull item 8.4 from the agenda and it will be brought back at a different time? There was a mix-up in the ordinance that was published.
Out of objection. I see no objection to moving the agenda items.
We need a motion and a second.
Have a motion and objection, an objection, a motion and a second for the agenda as amended?
Yes, I'll make the motion. We'll get the pull item 8.4, 8.6, 8.7, and 8.8, and take those after the chamber announcements.
8.4 will be taken off the agenda.
8.4 is taken off the agenda, excuse me.
Yes, the other items, 8.6, 8.7, and 8.8 will be after public comments in case anyone wishes to make a public comment on them.
Okay. So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five to oh. Next on the schedule are special proclamations. I don't think we have any tonight, do we? Moving ahead to the Chamber of Commerce, do you have any announcements to make?
Thank you, Mayor Brown and council. Next, this coming, a week from tonight, a week from today, we'll be in this room with our luncheon, and Mayor Brown is graciously going to be our speaker that day. And on Friday night is our awards banquet at the lodge. And then another thing that has come on our agenda is, May 14th, we are going to redo the junior golf tournament at the country club here on May 14th. It'll be a 12 o'clock shotgun and dinner afterwards. That's all I got.
You said chain golf tournament.
Yeah, it's for the junior golf.
Oh, to raise money. Yeah, you said junior golf tournament, and I thought.
Oh, yeah. It is a junior golf tournament sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, so it's junior golf.
No, no, it's charity for junior golf.
Okay, so it's a golf.
Okay, I got you.
Golf tournament to benefit.
To benefit junior golf, that's correct.
I'd like to just augment that, that Erin Palmer, there, I believe in a few minutes, new city manager, will be with me at the Chamber of Commerce discussion next Friday afternoon, and so it'll be a chance to.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday afternoon, excuse me. Chance to meet him as well.
We have to see how item 8.6 goes before you can make that statement. Sorry.
Take that one back. Okay, moving on. Public comments, do we have any requests for public comments?
We do. The first I have is Art Femister.
You've got to get the shot. Come on, you've got to, that's important.
It's your.
I was going to say, I was sitting there kind of pricking myself while you're waiting for that now. Does that look good?
Your 15 seconds of non-fame wouldn't be there.
Yeah, yeah. We're a target, one or the other. We're good? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Threw that off. Trying to time myself here, bear up me one second, I'm sorry. I apologize, I was trying to time myself so I don't go over time, and I went over and hit the wrong button here, so let me go ahead and hit start. There we go, okay. The, so, good evening, everybody, I want to thank everybody for their time there. The reason I'm here is I just have some questions about the fire service contract and maybe some, I'll just say, concerns on that, but I want to make sure everybody knows that. I understand you all work for free, no one's benefiting from this whichever way it goes on that, it's just the way it is, but I also, you always say that you should be involved if you have concerns, just with my work schedule, I haven't been able to attend those meetings, so I'm just going by from what I read online. Just to recap, we know what happened last year, we lost the fire service contract, we hired a temporary fire chief who was going to show us the way, that didn't work out. October, we reached a temporary agreement for a year with the Riverside County Fire Department, that put us in good shape there. October 8th, we had our, the city had the first startup meeting on that about how to move forward. That part has me a little confused because, without saying name, we'll just say committee member, stated the committee was dedicated to starting a fire department and nothing less. The committee would be, the committee would not be debating whether it should be done or not, it would be committed to getting the fire department up and running. So, it sounds like on February 8th, we had a startup committee determine if it could happen or not, but we determined it was going to happen, at least as I read it on that. I could be wrong on that. We had two more meetings on that, October 26th, November 12th, good information posted online, then no meetings for two months. There was another meeting on January 14th, good information on that, the proposal came back from the consultants. Next meeting, there was no agenda available, next meeting, there was no action, there was just action minutes, no information available. The next meeting in February wasn't posted, nor wasn't held, and that's it, that's all we have, and then next week, we're going to be told if this moves forward or not. So, it seems like there's a lot of information on that missing. If we know we're going to do it in the first place, then why, we have no idea what it costs, how we're going to do it, but we're going to hire someone to tell us we're going to do it, but what if he says we can't do it? I'm kind of confused on that, that's a little off. The, it's almost like, you know, you know, don't worry, you'll have your, you can still choose your own doctor and healthcare rates won't go up, it just sounds a little different on that. The other question I have, if two member council members are making a commitment for all five of you, because they're saying we are going to start it, I'm just a little confused on that. The quote came back on January, we put it out to eight people, only one responded, that kind of raises a red flag. We said you've got 45 days and about 15,000 to 20,000, they said it's going to be 120 days and 70,000. It sounds like they only have 45 days to do 120-day study, that's concerning in that also. And then the kind of the last part on that is just looking at the timeframe to put, to hire that many people, if you're going to hire 15 applicants, hire 15 firefighters, typically about 50 applicants per spot, that's 750 applicants, four tests each minimum on that, the physical, the written, the oral, the other part, that's 3,000 tests. That's 3,000 hours in five months, there's only 100 days, at 20 hours a day, that's 800 hours to do 3,000 hours of testing in five months. And that's assuming everything starts like right now and onboard, and they get the uniforms, and this puts aside everything else that's happening. So, I'm just a little curious and concerned, I don't know if you can comment or not, I spoke with someone, I've been trying to get information because I didn't want to come up here and have to say this, I can't find anything else out, I just, I hate to have next week say, "We're going forward," and we never knew how we got to that point. So, I'm out of time, thank you, and again, I appreciate all your efforts.
Okay. Let me suggest, first of all, we can only, because this was not an agendized item.
I understand.
We cannot make a whole lot of statement. I think we can, though, comment some quick answers related to scheduling, if I'm not mistaken. Plus, I wouldn't be a bit surprised that when it's Councilwoman Hagerty's turn to make a report on what's going on with her committees, that she'll probably address a lot of the issues you raised there.
That's fine, sure, absolutely.
Do we have any scheduling information that can replace that in the city manager comments?
But you haven't hired him yet, so how can you do that? I'm just kidding.
So, we'll try to respond to your, we'll try to, I believe you'll hear a lot of the responses to your questions when we get to our comment section.
And I appreciate it. I know you all, you all have the same best intentions to mine, this is not to slam anybody, so.
You could have contacted me at any time, I'm public safety, and that's what I'm here for, so you could have contacted me and I'd be happy to talk to you at any time. Just one other little aside, the paper did misprint the amount, it was 30,000, not 70,000, and the 45 days is in fact what we had because that's all we had, and I can go into more detail with that and other information down the road. I did speak with the press enterprise about their incorrect, I don't know that they ever corrected it, but I did speak to them.
This is actually on the agenda, on the, it was printed off the agenda, that statement on that, I have the agenda here, but that's okay, I'm not here to pick apart that, that's, I'm just saying, that's all. All right, thank you for your.
Are there other public comments?
Yes. Kathy Mulcahy.
Hi, I'm short, I'm Kathy Mulcahy, and I'm here to discuss the 880 waterfront acres of BLM land bordering Canyon Lake to the west and north, and that's the area behind the Jump Lake on Longhorn and the land on both sides of the ski course. These trails are used daily by residents for hiking, mountain biking, and horseback riding. They are also home to a multitude of wildlife and waterfowl. I'm with a group of 300 voters who use this land for recreation and do not want to see it sold and developed. The City of Canyon Lake has approached the BLM to request a land exchange so land can be developed and the city raise a small amount of tax revenue. You guys told the voters that the utility tax we voted for would save our fire station, it did not. We went into the general fund to pay for pensions and salaries. Developing this land is a bad idea, it would ruin all the recreation activities there. It, building tract homes on those 880 acres would create gridlock on Greenwald Avenue to get to the 15 and 215 freeways. It would ruin our private water ski course for the ski club and the wakeboard club, it would destroy our views, it would lower our property values and change our community from a beautiful bedroom community surrounded by open space to a high-density sea of homes. Why? Because you want to generate less than 20% of our annual budget. This fiasco will take years to realize any tax benefit, and that was from talking to the BLM supervisor. It's not going to save our fire station or our city. Our group has started a petition and has received over 300 voter signatures in five days. Almost everyone I've spoken with is against this potential land exchange and subsequent development. The land should be saved as a recreational area similar to the La Cresta Plateau for future generations. That model protects wildlife while promoting recreation. I'm asking each of the council members and the mayor to tell us, your constituents, if you are for or against this. As voters, we need to know where you stand. Thank you.
Thank you. I imagine you'll have to hear some comments when it becomes time for council comments.
I have an announcement. On Saturday, March 12th, at 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the Water District, Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, is holding its Splash Into Spring, it's a yearly event, great time for families to get together, there are sewage treatment plant tours, water-wise landscape demonstrations, big construction vehicles, games, activities for kids, there are free refreshments, there's the Wyland Foundation Clean Water Experience this year, which should be fun. So, it's a great educational and fun experience for families, bring your grandchildren, and it's Saturday, March 12th. Thank you.
Just for the record, that was Nancy Horton. Other speakers' request?
Yes, Barry Talbot.
Evening, Mayor, council members, thanks for this opportunity to speak. I would like, first of all, to congratulate you, I believe, on what's going to be happening later on. As the new city manager, I'm glad you acted on a timely basis to get that taken care of. I do have some concern with air conditioning in here, though, I thought, maybe you think it's winter time here. Anyway, but seriously, I am a little bit concerned about the change, apparent change in procedure, I hope it's just temporary basis, but to move city council reports and committee council reports and comments up earlier in the agenda item, I think is a disservice to our community. I think while a summarized version of the committee reports that the council members all attend and play an important role in is important to us, it tends, it seems to me that we tend to go a little bit long, and by moving this section earlier in the comments, earlier in the evening, that those waiting to speak or waiting to hear about important, more important in my opinion, business issues, that it's a disservice to them. Many times, the meeting goes on a little bit late, and by the time you get around to the business section or comments about important subjects, everybody's going to leave. So, I don't think it's very transparent, and I hope you reconsider that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Are there other requests for comment?
Yes, Jack Wansley.
Jack Wansley, I was going to give him a tracking log, but.
I couldn't care less, Jack.
With reference, my comments are on the BLM. The city's been working with BLM for several years, and the council members have met with BLM, they've also met with environmentalists, they've met with many different organizations with reference to the BLM location. The BLM location, for those of you who probably don't know or remember anything about BLM, they were in the process of selling that when we became a city. In fact, that was one of the reasons we became a city, so we could get control of it. And they went all the way to Washington to try to stop that, but we were able to gain control and put it within our city limits. Primarily, that move was to stop any person building and so on, we thought that was a good idea. Since then, many, many years have passed, over 20 years, and they are going to, we think, after talking to the congressman, they've met with him, the mayor knows more about that than I do, but the comment was that we try and get together with environmentalists and try and have an agreement. One of the things that we proposed when we went to Riverside was the fact that the east side of the lake could be developed and the west side used for trails and so on. That was an original recommendation by environmentalists, that was their recommendation to start off with. They wanted horse trails down there on the other side, it was not on the east side. And if you look at their map, and we have a copy of their map, that's where it was. The big reason that I would not want to see the whole area turned into a recreational type thing is because of the expense. You're talking about a huge area, over 640-some acres, and that's a section, and that expense would go to the city. You're talking about police, you're talking about fire, you're talking about cleanup, you're talking about all kinds of things like any other park, but it costs money. And our city just don't have that kind of money. Oh, I thought maybe somebody come up with some money. But anyway, that would be my reason, I think the city has a good plan, I think it would be better for everybody concerned, it would be helpful with reference to cost, mainly cost, and I think that if your organization, you say 300 people, it would be good to get a couple representatives and start working with our new city manager. Incidentally, welcome aboard, city manager.
In a minute, in a minute.
Maybe. But anyway, start working with them on the project, because the project's been worked on for almost two to three years, what, about three years, Tim, something like that? Anyway, it would be something to work with them and not go out and have a whole separate deal by yourself. That's just a recommendation, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Are there other requests or comment? Anybody out there want to say something, haven't had a chance? Speak now. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, you, hey, come on up. Okay, we can't turn these things into debates, but, okay.
In reference to developing the east side of the ski course and the area behind the Jump Lake, and not develop the west side of the ski course and have that for recreation, that is absolutely not suitable for recreation. It is so mountainous, if you, I've ridden my horse down a couple of those hills, I've had to get off, and I was sliding down the hill with my horse behind me, completely dangerous and not suitable for any kind of recreation trails. It's just not. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to say? And we would appreciate your stating your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Janoschek, and in response to the gentleman who came before me, he made a comment about, we need to develop that, I think it's 880 acres, so that we can save money and not spend the money on parks from the city. Well, if we disincorporated, then the county would be responsible for that and the city wouldn't have to pay anything. So, I think his argument supports my position that we shouldn't be a city because we simply can't afford it, and we don't have to give up that land if we're not a city. So, I would ask you to consider disincorporating. Thank you.
I guess I say thank you. Are there any other people who'd like to comment? Going, going, okay, we're going to move on now. We have rearranged the agenda a bit as a test run, Barry, nothing that's locked in stone here. So, we're going to have committee reports before we enter into business discussions. I'm sorry?
Exempt.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, you do it.
Okay. So, we're going to have the comments before that, but we are going to move items.
8.6, 8.7, and 8.8.
8.6, 8.7, and 8.8, ahead of committee and council reports, so that we can do this more officially like. So, moving on to item 8 point, whatever it is, 8.6.
8.6, but before we do that, let me make a comment in response to your comment, public comments. In order to discuss the BLM issues, you do need to place this item on a future agenda. It isn't on this agenda, so your comments as to that item, other than to ask that it be placed on a future agenda, need to be limited, if not nonexistent.
Did we comment? I didn't hear a comment.
No, no, before you are tempted to do so.
Oh, no, I think everybody gets that rule.
You said we could comment during our comments.
Well, okay. Moving ahead, items 8.6, do I have a staff report?
So, I apologize, but you, hopefully, I can shut my mouth after these next two items. You have in front of you an employment, a proposed employment agreement for your city manager, and this was removed from the consent agenda because you need to have a specific discussion of the compensation provisions of this agreement. Does everyone have a copy of this? Because I want to move to the compensation provisions and go over them with you, and then I would encourage you to have a discussion of them. State law requires that the discussion of compensation be, in general, in open session, and state law also requires that a city manager contract be in open session of a regular meeting. It was part of the laws that came up after bill. So, if you'll take a look at section three, which is entitled Compensation of City Manager, I'll tell you what it provides, and then I think you.
Can we make sure that everybody has a copy of that?
Okay, they were emailed, I can go get more.
I, yeah, I can't do it without it.
Can we?
We'll take, yeah.
A break for a moment, we need to make sure that everybody has important document, we need to make sure everybody has a copy. Can you run me another copy, too? I don't want to be looking at my iPad.
Despite our, despite our request, despite our request to move this up, would you like to proceed with public comments while she's doing, with your council comments while she's doing this in the interest of time? It's totally up to you.
Well, if it's up, if, without objection, we move ahead a little bit? Okay, who do we have first on the list of council or comments? Jordan?
And by the way, since we're, since there are two places for public or council comments, I would prefer that we keep the initial council comments related to the committee meetings and try to keep it brief so that we can inform the public of what's going on outside of Canyon Lake, and then if there are specific editorial issues or things that we would like to have placed on a future council meeting, on the future council agenda, that we do that in the second public comment section.
Jordan?
And thank you, Mr. Talbot, because I'm always prepared to talk about things, so I'm happy to do so at this particular time. I won't go through everything in detail, but, and I'll do the thing that most people are waiting for, last first, which I really don't have a report from Vector, I have about 20 pages of information on the Zika virus, and I'd be happy to arrange for the technician at Vector to come here and make a presentation so that everybody understands it better than perhaps the way I might present it. But it is quite serious still, and there are a lot of things that are being done about it. As I always say, I've got. I always say, I've got a whole bunch of stuff here. I'll leave it, and hopefully, if everybody desires, I'll make sure that somebody comes here to speak on the subject. So, with that said, I'm going to move on to where I started first, where I usually go after the city council meeting, to the SCAG meeting, which is tomorrow morning again. I sit on the Energy and Environmental Committee, and we had quite an interesting presentation from the community in Claremont. They're vying for a grant to, well, I'm not sure exactly how to explain what the grant is going to do. It's more of a, more of a gratification rather than a financial grant. But they have a, they have a network going called CHIRP, Community Home Energy Retrofit Project, and they are encouraging everybody to get involved, along with the HERO program, as I push off all the time, to do energy retrofit. And just as an example of what it's done for this city, the statistics are that, from the Realty Board, homes are selling for 9% more that are energy efficient. Thirty-two percent of these homes have not gone into default, which is a pretty big percentage for what's usually taking place. The reason for that is that the people are saving so much money they can afford to stay in their house. There is insulation that everybody's aware of that they think is really helping their house, or their homes, or whatever it is they're putting it in. But if it's not installed properly, you lose about 60% of what it's supposed to be doing. And that's quite a bit as far as energy is concerned. And once again, I have some information here that I don't want to take all evening talking about, about this.
Before the council member continues, section 4.8 of your Rules of Conduct, which you'll find in your binder, Resolution 2015-36, contains the literal statement that no council member shall speak for a longer time than three minutes before he or she has the floor without the approval of majority vote of the council. I would strongly suggest, Mr. Mayor, that you consider a motion to allow people, council members during this portion of the agenda, to speak for longer than three minutes, since Councilmember Aaron Crowse has 14 seconds left.
Without objection?
Well, I think that the whole purpose of that was to, I think I'm on. I think the whole purpose of that was to limit the comments to three minutes, to condense what you have to say. That's important to the people. The, part of the thing is that if you're giving reports on meetings, there are two laws that are in fact involved in that. One law is that if you do something at city expense, then you have to report at the next meeting what you did, how it affected the city, and that. And much of that, as I say, when it's my turn, I attended the meetings I was supposed to. The meetings that I attend, I'm compensated by RTA for that meeting, and there's no expense to the city. There's no expense to the city in much of what I do. So, if there's no expense to the individual, they don't have to do that. If it's an activity report of where you've gone, I don't think, especially at this point in time, people need to hear it.
Well, I'm not going to get into a debate, but I think when you tell people you went to where you're supposed to go, that doesn't tell them the thing. I think the audience is entitled to know what we do. You know, we're not just sitting up here. We do a lot of things besides coming to council meetings, and a lot of time is spent and a lot of effort is put forth going to these various meetings. And if I'm limited to three minutes, then I'm not, I'm not doing the public any service. So, I understand that I can continue. Mr. Mayor?
I guess at this point, since it's violation of our rules, we need a vote?
Yes, you do. Yes, you need a majority vote to override.
All right. I move to extend the time period for comments so that the council, we're not, by the way, just to clarify, we're not reporting to you. We're actually kind of reporting to each other. You're just watching. But we're letting each other know what's going on, and that's important, too. So, I move that we allow five minutes for reporting of our various activities and committees that we've attended.
Do I hear a second? So, we're moving second to extend for this time, or I don't believe we can change the decorum without...
No, just this time, and when we have enough changes to the decorum rules, we'll bring them back in front of you again.
Okay. Well, this is not the decorum. This is in the Code of Conduct.
This is Resolution 20-15-36, which is the City Council Resolution Regarding the Rules of Procedure for Council Meetings and Related Functions and Activities.
It's also in the Code of Conduct, then.
So, I would suggest, and it's...
We need a vote. The motion has to be made.
So, I have a call for a vote. All in favor of extending to five minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
No.
I believe that's four to one.
In the absence of, yes, the motion was to extend to five minutes for this evening. A vote was four to one. Councilmember Zeitz voting no.
So, if I understand correctly, he has two minutes and 14 seconds.
You want me more minutes?
Jordan, continue, please.
Are we continuing, or are we going back to...
No, we're done.
You can have three more minutes, four more minutes.
Thank you.
He said he had 14 seconds left. Two minutes and 14 seconds.
I had no idea this was going to be a debate as to what we're trying to tell the people here. And I apologize if I talked too long, but I think that's what my job is to be. So, continuing with that, on the 5th of February, I attended a meeting with the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. It was a Be Water Wise presentation. Our representative from the EVMWD, Nancy Horton, was there. It was presented by the general manager, Jeff Randy Record, I believe is his name. Congressman Ken Calvert was there. State Senator Mike Morell was there. I believe Assembly Leader Chad Mays was there. And this was just a little orientation about how we are wasting water and what the, what we can do about it. And I guess I have a whole big brochure here, so you'll have to read it because I don't have that much time to talk about it. Attended a special council meeting on February the 10th. I had the honor on the 16th of February. The mayor allowed me to, once again, go to the Student of the Month, which is one of my favorite activities. And everybody should be able to attend that and see what these kids do, and what they accomplish, and what their GPAs are. It's just amazing, and you should all be proud. This is not, this is Temecula High School, Elsinore High School, Lakeside High School, and the One Charter School. Also, on the 18th, there was another water meeting at EVMWD that Vicki Warren and I attended. And once again, Nancy Horton was there, giving us an update. On the 19th of February, I was honored to be present at the state of the association that the POA put on at the lodge. All of the council members were invited. I didn't mean to imply that it was an honor for me only, but it was nice to hear what the state of the association is with the POA. And last but not least, and I've already spoken about it, but the Vector Control is more than happy to come here, or you can call them for any information you want in regards to this Zika virus. And it's not going away right now, so, but I can't even pronounce some of the words of some of these critters that carry this disease, but it's all here in writing. And with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you for the extra time. Councilmember Warren?
That'll be much shorter than that. One of the main things that I, that was discussed at one of my meetings is that our alum treatments may be put off. We do expect another group of rain, hopefully, God willing, from El Nino. And if it does, it will interfere with our spring treatment. Historically, our fall treatments have been more beneficial anyway. So, to put that off is not the greatest thing, but it would be the most cost-effective, or could be the most cost-effective. It would be a waste of money and time to do it, knowing that we're going to have another influx. Speaking of that, people who are out on the water, near the water, are our best eyes out there. I can't get out all the time to see what our water is like. That is how we monitor. So, if you would, please send me pictures, send me updates, tell me good, bad. I want to know what's going on, where you are, so that we can better assess what's happening. We know East Bay is continuing to be a problem. That's what we want to work on. So, I'm accessible. You can reach me anytime. The March 12 splash into spring was mentioned by Nancy Horton. I cannot tell you enough how much fun this is and how much you should attend this, and go with your kids, your grandkids, nephews, nieces. Go by yourself. I went by myself. There's a lot of hands-on activities for the children. It's, it really is very informative. The tours are amazing. It really is a great event. So, that's March 12. And that is all I have.
All right. Councilmember Zeitz?
Yes, just something real quick that I'm going to give some brochures to the City Perspective's new city manager. It's something from the RTA, and just want to talk quickly about that, because I wasn't aware of this. There's two things that the RTA does, the Riverside Transit Authority, one, and Mayor, ex-Mayor Bonner was a member of it, so you probably know all about this, that they will come out and give personalized trainings, whether it's seniors groups, veterans groups, or any groups, to tell them how to work the bus system and how to do all those kinds of things. They'll do it one-on-one, groups of 10 or whatever. So, if you have any group that wants to learn how to use the buses, they'll come out and do that. So, pass that down. And then I think something that's very important, I know it's to the mayor's heart, is personalized travel training for veteran, or travel training and for veterans, is that veterans in this area can go from Temecula to Loma Linda Hospital, the Veterans Hospital, free on a bus daily. And this will explain how they can do that. They can pick up the bus at 7:00 in the morning down in Murrieta, and then it goes to, to Paris at the depot there, and then to the March Air Force Base, and then over the hill, Ritchie Canyon, to Loma Linda, free for the veterans. And I don't know that they know that, so some veterans have problems getting to the hospital for their medical treatment. There is this document, and we should have, we can get more for the office, and people should know. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Protem Hagerty?
Okay. Barry, I just want to let you know, I had suggested moving the council comments up. It was kind of a selfish reason, because everybody leaves before we get that. And the public safety in particular, I was concerned about, because there are frequently things reported that people should know, need to know. And if everybody's gone, they don't hear it. So, I had, it seemed to me that it would be better to give her reports when people could listen. But as far as the other reports, I get it. It's probably very boring, and I don't, I don't have an axe to grind. I am considering having our public safety report, perhaps somehow, other than being put online, maybe something printed in the Friday Flyer on a weekly basis, because we have had several incidents lately, fairly serious ones, that I think people need to be aware of that are going on inside the gates. So, I'm not sure. I'm debating whether to write an article, or how to do this to get that information out to the public. And I would appreciate any suggestions from anyone, but I think it's, that in particular is information that I think people should be made aware of, and that's why I wanted to do it early. As far as this month's report, our public safety meeting was canceled because of lack of quorum yesterday. So, I do not have any of those figures available. As far as what happened, I also have asked the POA to start giving me a report from Securitas, so that we would again have some basic information on that. They will not send a representative, but they will give me a written report. So, I will have that starting next month. As far as the fire, Mr. Art, where are you? We hired a consultant. The original argument, or comment, I did not make it, but I was part of the committee. And there was a whole group there trying to just shut the whole thing down. And we wanted to find out if it was possible. We didn't want arguments against it. We wanted positive things. And that's why that comment was made. We're here to try and form a fire department, not unform one. So, that's why that comment was made. We did decide that the best way to go would be to hire a professional consultant. Unfortunately, we had to give him a very short timeframe. They were very accommodating. There were some bits of information we aren't going to have because of the time constraints, but we basically asked him to review the two proposals that we had and determine if it's go or no-go based on that. And if it's go, then we would move forward quickly. We already have an equipment list. We had two staffing models. We had a lot of information available. So, I have not spoken with him except once. He has been giving his reports to the city manager, and I'm sure there'll be some comments included in that. We have run into a couple of bumps in the road that I'm very disappointed in hearing that are, through no fault of ours, but on cooperation from other areas that I don't know if there's a way around or not. We'll find out when the consultant comes back to us. His report, unfortunately, was supposed to get to us by today, so we would have it tonight. But time constraints were just way too tight. They were gracious in agreeing even to do it at the timeframe we gave them. We will be getting a rough draft this week. It will be in final draft, I believe, the following week, and we will be having a meeting to discuss that. It will be posted, so everybody can see at that time and be here to hear what he has to say. I'm very, the company was the only one, but I vetted them, and it turns out they're one of the best consulting companies, fire consulting companies in the country. So, we did move forward with them. I have a lot of confidence in them based on their reputation. I spoke with one of the primary owners of the company, with the manager in charge of the Western Division, and then with the consultant that they assigned to us, and vetted him. And all the information came out very positive. So, I feel very good about it being reliable information that we get. And what else did I want to say? I guess I can't talk at all about the BLM land?
And you have nine seconds.
Okay. The Transportation Committee, I'm not going to go into any details. That's something else that I think a lot of you might be very interested in, because it has a lot to do with the money that's going to be allocated to us to repair our roads. And God knows, we've got a couple of roads around here that are getting pretty bad. But I will put that off till later. Thank you.
My comments. First of all, I went to the county fair on behalf of the city and visited the new jail complex that's being built out there. Secondly, I'd like to announce that we will have a representative from Building and Planning at our Administration and Finance Committee meetings to talk about anything that needs to change within building codes or something like that. So, if any would like an informal discussion with representatives from Building and Planning, 8:00 on the first Tuesday of the month. I would, though I'm breaking my own recommendation here, I would like to recommend that on a future agenda, we change the, or we discuss changing the decorum rules that we have just superseded.
Our plan was to gather up a number of changes and place it back on your agenda.
I've seen so many of these things that, my concern is that there are a lot of times things get lost when it's placed out there forever. So, as things come up, I would prefer that we make incremental changes if we have to, so that this council has a chance to operate the way we want to operate without jumping through hoops.
Talk about it on our future agenda next.
Okay. Well, that's what I was requesting. It'd be listed as a future agenda item. That's it. I'm done. Moving on, without objection, did I, to the, going back to eight point six, I believe it is?
Indeed.
Okay.
There are copies in the back of both, the city manager agreement, which is item eight point six, and the city clerk agreement, which is item eight point seven. We're going to talk about the city manager agreement. I want to ask you...
I've got it, John.
I can't.
Did you get yours?
No.
I thought you wanted me copies. Did you give me, you should give me a copy?
No, I asked for a copy. I thought you did, too.
I did. I did.
How'd you get them, man?
Okay.
I have it now.
Let me describe how we got to this version, and then perhaps you'd like to hear from the subject of this contract, Mr. Palmer. The compensation that is proposed is based on conversations that the interim city manager and I, and I believe the ad hoc committee members had with Mr. Palmer on several occasions. It is presented for your consideration, and I want to emphasize your discussion and review before you vote on it, so that it's clear that the council understood this and it was presented to the public. The proposed base salary is $130,000 per year. Your salary for city managers has ranged between $120 and above $130. The interim city manager's compensation was $100,000 per year. Salary is paid the same way as it's paid to other city employees. Vacation is in accord with the personnel policy. There is the ability to cash out vacation time annually. Provisions of state law require payment of all the vacation time upon termination of an agreement. Sick leave is accrued in the same manner as for all employees. Holidays are the same. Dental vision and health are the same. The city contributes $806.29 per month for all employee benefits, and the same would be done for the proposed city manager. As with many management contacts, contracts, it is, and with past city manager contracts, tracts, it is proposed that he be credited with management leave at the time this agenda, this agenda item contract is approved, and thereafter he would have 80 hours of leave annually. The reason for such leave is because the city manager is an exempt employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act and puts in a lot of overtime, like these meetings and other night meetings, morning meetings, for which some additional compensation should be provided. The 80 hours needs to be used within the end of each calendar year, or it's lost. It can't be cashed out. The provisions of this as to retirement are the new provisions. After AB 340, the manager is required to pay his own contribution to PERS. It's not insignificant. There is a lesser retirement formula, which is 2% at 62, based on state law changes. The city manager would be eligible for reimbursement of moving expenses up to $3,000 upon presentation of receipts and approval of those receipts. If the contract terminates within the first year of employment, he is required to repay the amount paid to him for moving expenses, and that amount could be deducted from his final paycheck. You pay for associations and subscriptions. You provide him with a cell phone in the same manner as you did for other city managers. See. He participates in the deferred compensation plan to the extent he chooses to with his own money. He's reimbursed for expenses in the same way as for other employees, and he goes to League of Cities and the city manager's conference at your expense, subject to the reimbursement and travel requirements imposed on public employees and imposed by your rules, although they're not the same necessarily as for the council. I think that is all of the compensation provisions, and I would ask that perhaps you hear from Mr. Palmer, and then you have a discussion of these provisions before you move forward to vote on the agreement, up or down.
Well, I think what's presented to you, I'm very amicable with. I think it's a fair agreement and look forward to getting started and working with the council.
Comments from the committee before we move on? Comments from council?
My comment is that I've looked at the last three contracts of the last previous city managers that we've had. Have them all here. I'm sure you've seen them as well. I think this contract is absolutely fair. I think we're very fortunate to have somebody of Mr. Palmer's caliber, and I hope the rest of the council agrees with me, and I'd like to welcome you, not the first one, but hopefully this will.
After you vote.
Yes, that's what I meant to say. But thank you for applying, and we're looking forward to, after we vote, to spend more time with you.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? John?
I think the contract is a fair contract. I think it's viable. It's unfortunately what I've heard before. I will vote no on the contract based on the fact that I think we handled it improperly as a, and not necessarily legally, as a, as a group. He's a great person. I think he should, should be our city manager. I just think that we didn't handle it properly, and for that reason, I would vote no. I would love to vote yes for him as a city manager, done, I think, properly.
Other council comments?
I would just like to comment on the process. We put out a request for resumes. We received, I believe it was eight. Some of them were for an interim position. They were not for a full-time position. I reviewed all of them. Well, I, Vicki and I were the committee. We reviewed them. I telephoned and interviewed the final three. I vetted those who, I telephoned interviewed significantly. I vetted them with a number of different people they worked for, worked with, or that reported to them. And I looked at the consistency of the comments that were made by those people to make sure that one person wasn't praising the individual and somebody else being a little eh. And the consequences of that were that, the recommendation we made was to bring Aaron in for an interview with the city. They interviewed, we interviewed two individuals. We unanimously agreed that Aaron would, Palmer would be the person that we would like to make an offer to. It was a very thorough process. I just want everybody to know that.
Any other council comments?
One additional comment. This is your opportunity to change the compensation up or down, even though he's sitting here. You can talk about it, please.
I'd like to, before we move into amendments, ask if there are any public comments. Seeing nobody wanting to comment, I guess we're at a point, if you have requested amendments, now would be the time. Seeing no head shaking. Oh, you've got a public comment. If you can just go behind the mic and tell us your name.
Kathy Michener. I guess I, it sounds like what Don did was very, I mean, can you hear me? It sounds like you were really thorough, but I don't understand what Mr. Zeitz was talking about, how it wasn't proper. Can you kind of, oh, okay, all right. And then, where do you come from? What city?
Most of my experience is in California, most of which is in Southern California. The last two years, I was the city administrator in Highland, Utah. Before that, I came from the high desert, Atlanta. I was there six years.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Welcome to Canyon Lake.
I would think, if you don't mind, I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Sure.
But I think it would be appropriate time to give the audience a little bit about your background and where you come from and what you do. Give us, give them, everybody a little bit of.
Sure. I have almost 20 years of local government experience. It's kind of, I grew up in it. My father's a retired fire chief, so I'm very familiar with local government. I went to school for this. I've worked for several cities, even one of them you've probably heard of, San Bernardino, so don't hold that against me. But mostly, as I said, in Southern California, I've come up through the administrative services tract. I've been, I've been an analyst. I've been a, I've been a human resources director, deputy city manager, risk manager. I've done labor negotiations, special projects. I've done economic development. I've pretty much run the gamut. So I really think I have pretty good breadth of experience to be able to come here and work on the specific things that the council's working for, particularly public safety. I have a, just through osmosis, have a pretty good understanding of what's going on there, and along with some economic development things the council would like to work on.
I think, I think we're ready to move on. Do I have any more council comments? No more public comments? Are there any motions?
I move that we accept the contract for our new city manager, Aaron Palmer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract for a new city manager, Aaron Palmer. Comment? Okay. No additional comments. Can we call for the vote compensation, so it has to be roll call, I would assume?
Councilmember Erin Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeitz?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's approved 4-1 with the Zeitz voting no.
That being said, is Mr. Palmer now our city manager?
No.
No.
No, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Palmer will be your, has a contract to be your city manager. He will be appointed by you when you consider the resolution under section 8.8, which is after you act on item, on item 8.7. We'll get there.
Okay. So where are we at now? I'm losing track.
8.7.
8.7, okay.
And since he is not the city manager yet, I had hoped to transfer this to him, but we will finish. Your former interim city manager.
Why don't, since you would prefer to transfer it, can we move 8.0? Was anybody without objection move 8.8 before 8.7?
The city clerk is part of that, and we haven't approved my contract.
Okay, so we gotta go, okay.
Okay. The current, the, the person, Ariel Hall, formerly known as the interim city manager, will be retaining her position, if approved by the council, will be retaining her position as the city clerk. However, rather than be a part, rather than be a full-time employee, she will be a part-time employee under contract. This is a form of city clerk that you have used on several occasions before. Some of you may remember, Deborah, or, yeah, or Kay Vincent, and you, this form of contract city clerk has worked well for the city because of the limited resources and staffing. So as of yesterday, the same time that for payroll reasons, Mr. Palmer's contract commenced, as of close of business on February 29th, Monday, she would stop being the, she would move to her new position as of March 1st, yesterday, and that is in fact what has been happening, hoping for ratification by you today. Let's talk about the contract, which is considerably simpler than Mr. Palmer's contract, and specifically the compensation. This is the same form of contract, you have it in front of you, as has been used in the past with other contract city clerks. The compensation is $50 an hour. She would be reimbursed for expenses in the same way as other employees, which generally would mean mileage. There's taxes taken from it, and you would reimburse her a flat rate for use of her personal cell phone at $20 per month, and she shall retain bills showing city business use. As a part-time employee, she does not accrue benefits except for the required sick leave for part-time employees. It's now part of California law. So if you have questions or you wish to change the compensation or any other term of the agreement, this would be the time to mention that, and I will also let her talk to you about this.
Council comments?
I'll make one. I would just like to thank Ariel for the work that she did as interim city manager. She did a remarkable job stepping in at an extremely difficult time when we were, it was hitting the fan with the fire thing, and she stepped up to the plate, and she did a really excellent job for us, and I just want to commend you on that.
Absolutely.
John?
A year ago, I think I had a conversation with Ariel, and I talked to her about a person that she knew and somebody that, who was the first city clerk in the city of Canyon Lake, Kathy Bennett, who, as city clerks know, they know each other in other cities. And I had this affection for Kathy Bennett, who was, who started here in 1990, and I called her Mrs. City, because she was the heart and soul, as a city clerk, of this city for a number of years. And I had said to Ariel that, that I think that she could be an adequate replacement for Kathy Bennett as Mrs. City in this, in this part. The tough part for her is that she did such a terrific job as a city clerk. We dumped on her to become the interim city manager and put her through all of that havoc and turmoil and everything else, and she did a great job in that. And I look forward to working with the new Mrs. City and her as the, as a city clerk.
Well, thank you. That's an honor, especially for it to have come from Kathy Bennett, too. So, thank you.
Other council comments? Do I have any comments from the public? Seeing nobody, oh, I do have a comment request. Please feel free to, yes, you do. Oh, if it's a, if it's a physical issue, we can accommodate you.
Well, because experience just now, this is something that none of us had any voice on or any vote on. Rather than take a half an hour out of this evening meeting, why couldn't you do that in your closed session? You're going to make the decision yourselves anyway.
We're not allowed. It has to be public.
Okay.
It's required to be public.
Again, the council meetings are.
Microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, dear. The question was, why did we take this much time to discuss this when it was something that we, that we as a council were voting on, and it wasn't really requiring any public input? That's a very good question, but you have to understand, this council functions together once a month, sometimes twice a month for special sessions, but these things have to be done in the sunshine, in the public eye, so that if there are any questions or are any concerns, I have no idea what they would have been, but, but people have the right to come up and then discuss this. That's why it's on the agenda. Again, I know I've said this so many times, but the city council meetings, the council members are, are conducting city business together in the public, so that the public can see what we're doing. But it's not a public interaction meeting. It's not a give and take. It's not a debate necessarily. So that's why it seems like that, but you are witnessing something that's very important to the city. And you'll be able to say later, geez, I should have said something when I, when I had the chance. But that is why. It has to be a public process.
Is that adequate?
In order to remove any questions of the procedure in closed session, we did more than we might normally have done. It's legally necessary to be sure that there is no question raised about how we got here on this. And I'm sorry for the time it took, but the, the idea of the process is for it to be transparent in front of the public in case you have something amiss that members of the public would like to comment on. So.
Are there any, are there any other requests to speak from the audience? Council comments? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the part-time city clerk contract with Ariel Hall.
I.
We have motion and second. Because of, because the issue involves dollars, can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Erin Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeitz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Five zero. Resolution 2016-08, this is item 8.8. This item does two things. First of all, it actually appoints Mr. Palmer to be the city manager and the city treasurer effective as of yesterday. Because Ms. Hall is already your city clerk, there's no need to reappoint her, but at the request of the mayor and based upon your instructions, we have for your consideration, included within this resolution, a change in her title, retroactive to make her city manager as of April 1st of this, last year. There is no compensation change of any kind attached to that change. It is a retroactive honorary title change only.
Council comments?
Just one, one quick one. I believe that when we met and discussed the hiring, considering of Aaron Palmer, that to be appropriate and legal, and I did want that. My concerns were with compensation, and since the compensation and all of those things seem to be passed by. seem to be passed by the other members of the council, I see no reason why I would not vote to have him as our next city manager.
Would you like to reconsider your vote, so there could be a five zero vote, Councilmember Zeit, before I check the newspaper?
No.
Out of line, Ms. Attorney. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, having no other counsel comments, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2016 dash 08, appointing Erin Palmer as the city manager and city treasurer, and Erin Hall as the city clerk.
Do I hear a second? I have a motion and a second, provide them 8.8. It does not involve money, so we can do this on a yes or no, or yes or aye, is it supposed to be? Yea or nay?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Okay. Opposed, say nay. Okay, we heard, I heard no nays, so maybe we can change the verbiage there, so we don't have to speak in the archaic language from here on out.
More importantly, can we now finally say it?
Wait, 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 wait. Are we 5-0? Okay. New city manager and a new city clerk position, and I would like to thank our outgoing city manager and welcome our new city manager. Without objection, I'd like to take a five-minute break, so people can shake hands and introduce each other, and, and so I can sneak out. Without objection? Okay, you've got five minutes to say hello. Back to order. I will make a quick comment that the contracts have been signed, so we're all official now. Hand the contracts back over to the city manager. I think we're ready to go. Are we ready video? I believe the next item on the agenda is return to the consent calendar. If I have that correct. Eight point, that's, that will be part of the consent calendar. If you'd like to, if you'd like that pulled, we can for discussion. Okay, is, on the consent calendar, does anybody want to pull anything? Yeah, we've already made, moved the agenda with the elimination of 8.4, 8, 8, 6, 7, and 8, talked about separately before, so I believe we're approving 8.1, 8.2, and 8, let's see, 8.3, 8.5, and 8.9. Go ahead.
Can I make comment?
Sure.
I was looking under 8.3, our approval of claims and demands. Basically, that's our city expenses for the month, and several times I have had questions on that, and I understand, I can't come to the finance committee meeting and say anything or ask questions, so is the only option we have, we have a question to pull it and discuss it at the meeting?
That's my interpretation, yes.
You can send any questions to the city manager that you have on those, and then the city manager can respond to you individually.
Perfect, 'cause I, you know, it'd take the time in a meeting to go through.
Right. I would prefer that, so if you have any questions, particularly on consent items, send them to me, so we can vet them, you're comfortable, and then we can go on. If there's a real concern, then you can pull it at the meeting.
Good.
Since, if you have-
Expect a call from me.
If you, if you have concerns right now, I feel welcome to pull it, and we can discuss them.
No, I'll call it. No, no.
Okay. Just quick comment in relationship to that, we do review these fairly thoroughly, so that I think that everybody that sits through one of our finance meetings realizes we go over every one. Not that you shouldn't pull things and ask questions, but they are fairly well vetted before they reach the, reach the full council.
Yeah, I, I understood that, but I still, there were a couple of issues that-
Yep, nope, be comfortable. Any other discussion on the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
We have mo-, we have motions and secondes, and I have no idea who from, so, are we good?
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty, and a second by Councilmember Erin Krantz to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye. Oops, gotta be roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Erin Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Zeit? Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, aye, something.
It's approved 5-0.
Okay, moving on, schedule of future events. Are there any questions or comments related to the schedule of future events? Okay. I would like to request that in the, for the next meeting, we discuss a little bit of an expansion on the public events that we are reporting on, to include the outside meetings, i.e. the, you know, Rat Pack, or, excuse me, Regional Conservation Authority, and those type of things, plus have a discussion on our existing things that are not normally known, like, oh, for instance, the, the schools, and, and, you know, attending the, the award ceremonies for the schools. Before, it's been kind of left up to the discretion, I believe, of the mayor to figure out who goes to those kind of things, and I'd like to have a discussion in case everybody knows what's going on, so if we, if those social kind of events, other people would like to participate, we share that amongst council members as much as possible. I don't know whether it'd be a part of a formal calendar or not, but I would like everybody to be aware of the, the social kind of events that are going on, and opportunity to participate. Does that make sense?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, if we receive, let's say, a social event like the student of the month, would you like me to send that to all council members? Or would you like me to put that on an agenda?
At this point, what I want is just a discussion of, in the next meeting, of anything that we might add on to the, on, in relationship to what the council body does, and, and making sure everybody's aware of what's going on, so that if we can get as much participation in those kind of things as possible.
Okay, but not as a calendar item on-
On the event calendar, what I'm proposing is that we include the outside committee events.
Okay.
No, I've got two issues going on. One is, I would like the schedule of future events to include the outside committees, so people are aware of the dates and times and locations for outside committees.
Okay.
And then, two, I would like a discussion of sharing, other are discussing how we let each other know what kind of outside social events are going on, so that we can coordinate participation. I know there are some social events that happen and are not attended, because people are not aware of them. So, does that make sense to you, sir? No?
No. Oh, Barry, we can't agree. Well, there's two things. One, I, I think, I think in the past, when you had committee and council member comments, you did list WR cog and all of those things. You didn't on this particular one, for, for some reason, but you, you used to do that. I'm not complaining, but they were there, and, you know, you had the option of, of speaking on those items or not, and there was a list of that. I don't know, where would you have put in this, that there's a chamber, chamber banquet on the 11th? Would that be on here, and we're supposed to discuss?
I would consider that to be a social event, and I would like everybody to be aware, make sure that the entire council is aware of the social events that, that council, that someone from the council should probably attend, and at least to be aware of, of what's going on out there. And then the things that would be listed would be the formal outside government-sponsored committees. For instance, any JPA, or, you know, WR cogs, or Rat Pack, or whomever, that, that they'd be listed in this, so that the public is aware of the meetings that are, the government-related meetings that are going on, that are not a part of the, that we participate in, that are not a part of what's going on here in Canyon Lake.
I don't understand the government-related meetings, and you talked about student of the month. That's not a government-related-
Okay, I'm sorry. I should have, I was not clear in my intent. My intent was that the schedule of future events include the government-related meetings, so that would be one item, or that I wanted to request, without objection, I hope. And then the other one is have an item for discussion in the next meeting of having a more comprehensive calendar of all the events available to council members, so that we can all be aware of what's going on, and try to coordinate, making sure that there is somebody representing the city of some of these things that, oh, maybe he's going, maybe he's not going, we don't know. So two different items, I'd like to say.
Would you like a, an agenda item on each agenda that has a list that I could put together, that has all of the invitations to social events in the upcoming month?
Well, ideally, I'd think that that would be nice to have. If, if we had a central core, I didn't want to impose anything on us, I just wanted a discussion at this time, is how we could better coordinate.
That's what we do.
We're on item 10. 10.0. Well, yeah, just a moment. Do we have clarity on what request is?
And then, and then for like WR cog and RCA, RCA, those types of items, you would want those meeting dates listed under future meeting dates?
Under schedule of future events.
Okay. The, the other agencies, they have to meet the same Brown Act requirements that we do, so they do email out and post all of their agendas the same way we do?
I underst-
I don't necessarily get, like, I don't get the vector control agendas, they just go directly to the member.
There's also, I, I've gotten several invitations lately to women active in politics, that, for example, there's a breakfast in wine country once a month that I'm invited to and go to. There's various speakers at various meetings that come just to, to me as an individual, not to the council, so would you want all those on there? Before, I think we wandered slightly off the topic of the agenda, would it be possible to put this on for your next meeting for, and perhaps you could bring an example, or work with Ariel before then?
What I, all I wanted for the schedule of future events was to have the outside committees listed, but since it seems to be controversial, I'll drop my request.
It's not controversial, it's just not on the agenda. Well, it might be controversial, I don't know.
Okay. Just, we'll, at this point, forget it. Do you want us to still say something, Barry?
No, forget it all.
Having that dropped like a lead balloon, any, anything else on schedule of future events, changes, modifications? I will comment, since I don't know what's going on here, that we do have a, an event scheduled is our monthly RCA meeting, which occurs the first Monday of the month at the chamber, the-
Supervisors.
The supervisors' chamber in downtown Riverside, so that's an event that's not listed, but I would encourage public participation in those hidden government things that affect everybody's life a whole lot, very few people are familiar with. Okay, moving on, any other comments on item 10? Move to item 11, business items. Consideration of donation to Temescal High School for their grad night expenses. Do we have a report?
Even though we have a new city manager, I put together the reports for this agenda, so I'm gonna go ahead and go through them this time. In the future, it will be your city manager. This item is consideration of providing a donation to Temescal Canyon High School to assist them in funding their grad night activities for students who may not be able to afford to attend grad night. They put together a trip to Disneyland in the evening, and I believe it goes overnight, to keep the students in a safe, safe supervised area. They typically grad night is when the most alcohol-related accidents and deaths occur. The city council does have a promotion and advertising budget that has been used for these types of items in the past, for sympathy flowers, retirement gifts, little items like that. There is approximately $3,500 left in that account for this fiscal year, and should the council decide to give a donation, staff will just need to know the amount, and then we can put that into the form and send it to the school.
What's the precedent?
To my knowledge, the city has not donated to something like this in the past.
Have we been asked to in the past?
I'm not sure. There's no, I would have to go back through all the chrom files.
Because you have to be a little careful when, once you start something. You know, it's not that, I don't think it's a worthy cause, but you have to be a little careful, because once we start something, we set a precedent, so.
Well, we have to say this is not a club, because we would do things for clubs, but not clu-, no, that's the, I'm sorry. Got that all mixed up, I'm sorry, Dave. I, I think, I, I think it's a thing that our, majority of our kids go to this high school, and it is a relevant thing. My two children graduated from that high school, they went to grad night. It's a great thing that they get locked up for 24 hours, and can't get out and get killed like they have, and, and they always have a, a presentation that other people help put on, where there's a totaled-out car pulled onto the, the campus, and a boy and a girl, male, female, are dead for the day, and how, how the students feel about the fact that this person is no longer there, and I think they do great things, and I would love to support it, and, and if you want, I'll make a motion to that effect, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'd like to follow, ask if there's any other counsel comments?
Well, you make comments after the motion.
Well, I think we usually discuss com- We discuss right after the, you know, the, the staff report, we usually allow council discussions, is that the decorum? Am I doing decorum wrong here?
If, if it's not a resolution, then you can, you can go either way. Resolution says you gotta have a motion and then discussion, but.
We do have a public comment on this as well.
You do say we have something in the budget for this?
At this point, let's continue comments. Go ahead, Jordan.
No, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was asking if there is money in the budget for this?
There, the city council does have a promotion and advertising budget, and that budget has been used for donations or gifts, flowers, et cetera, in the past, and I did check with accounting, and there's $3,500 left in that budget for this fiscal year.
Well, for fear of being booed or hissed or what have you, and this is probably the first time tonight I've agreed with Mr. Zeit, but I think we should make a donation to this, it's a great, it's a worthy cause, at $250 a person, if that's what the cost is, and you know I like to spend money on occasions, I would recommend that we make a $1,000 donation to the high school, because our kids do go there, and as I said earlier- because our kids do go there, and as I said earlier, you can see what they accomplish. You would be very, very proud, and I know we'd be honored to do that. So that's my motion.
Or my suggestion. If I find out if I moved in decorum here, am I okay to continue? Well, we're still looking it up. Let's continue discussion at this point. Are there discussion?
If we're going to do that, I was reading where it costs approximately $250 per student to go to Disneyland with the bus and all the things that they spend money on to get them there, which is where the high school is having their event. If we're going to donate money, I was going to suggest that we donate $1,250, which is paying for five students. I don't know specifically what they want to use the money for.
Do we have any other council discussion, comments? Okay, I'll just comment, and I think it's a bad precedent, so I'm not going to vote for it. Are there any public comments?
Barry Talbot.
Sorry for being a pest this evening, but I think it's inappropriate for the city to be involved in funding something like this. We don't have any precedent, and I'd strongly urge that we not participate at this time. I just don't think it's appropriate. And if you do elect to proceed with some kind of donation, I suggest that you restrict it to Canyon Lake residents. So, thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Nancy Horton.
Nancy.
I've been around the block on this one a few times, so I thought I would say something. In 2008, when I ran for office, the previous council donated $15,000 to give uniforms to the Little League. And I discovered when I was running for office that there was no attempt by that council to ask for applications for any money, if they had any money, to have any criteria for what the money was going to be used for. And although Little League is near and dear to my heart, having had two sons, it was an inappropriate use of public funds, in my opinion, and many, many citizens felt the same. So when the council was formulated, we had a discussion and decided that we weren't going to be giving any money to public benefit. We didn't have any money to give. And as it turned out, the Great Recession happened, and there were no funds to give to anybody anyway. But we did have an idea of how it should be done had we had any funds. Number one, there should be applications from many different organizations. If you have any money, it's a public agency. Many different organizations should have the opportunity to apply. Number two, there should be criteria as to what exactly you plan to do in judging which group should get the money. To give to one group for sentimental reasons is not a good use of public funds, in my opinion. As important as it is to keep our kids safe, there are so many organizations in this city that would love to have $1,000 from the council. And they never had an opportunity to ask. They had no opportunity to know that money was available. And it seems like that this budget item was budgeted for things like flowers for people who in sympathy for somebody who passed away, or somebody who was sick, or some event such as that. A little going-away party for somebody who is leaving. And if there's any money left in that budget at the end of the fiscal year, great. It doesn't mean that it has to be spent. So I would think that this is not an appropriate use of public funds. And if any members of the council feel so strongly that they would like to sponsor a student to go to Disneyland, you can do so out of your own funds. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Do I have a motion? Hold on, Madam Attorney.
That is exactly right. Motion followed by discussion, followed by restatement of the motion, followed by a vote.
So we do, there has to be a motion before we do discussion?
Yes.
We can't talk about something before a motion's made?
There should be a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded.
So just so I'm clear about protocol, we get staff report, then we find out if there's a motion. If there's a motion, then we do discussion?
Staff report, initial questions by the council, public comment is before the motion. You can't have public comment with a motion pending. Then you see if anyone wants to make a motion, anyone wants to second that motion. If they do, then you will discuss the motion and eventually move on to the vote.
So we have, hopefully remember that, but.
We'll write it down.
So we need to have, we can have public comments before a motion's made?
You must have public comments before the motion's made.
Okay, I'll try to remember. Any other, do I, okay, we were out of order, so I'm going to try to get this back in order. Do we have a motion?
I thought I made a motion.
You did, and I just don't know if, I'm just trying to get back in order. Through the way I heard it, we had a motion with an amendment.
My motion was that we donate $1,000 to Temescal Canyon High School for their grad night.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any requests for amendment to that motion? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second. It's a financial issue, so I think we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Aaron Cranz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Zeitz.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty. Mayor Brown.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, I would have preferred not saying anything, but I won't know.
The motion fails two to three with Brown, Hagerty, and Warren voting no.
Okay, moving on. Let's see. Next item on the agenda, I believe, is item 11.2. Is that correct? Am I at the right spot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 11.2. I'm amending the pass-through convenience fee for credit card payment at City Hall and decreasing the maximum amount allowed to be charged from $1,500 to $300. Before we begin, let me ask a question. Didn't we talk about this last month?
Yes, at the February 3rd meeting, this was discussed, and the direction to staff was to return with a resolution that would change the pass-through convenience fee to $3 for any transactions up to $100 and $6 for any transactions between $101 and $300 and to make the maximum transaction amount $300 instead of the previous $1,500 due to the simple fact that the city was losing revenue in having to pay the 2.75% finance charge from the credit card companies. And that was most significant in any transactions over $300.
Attempting to do this right, do we have questions of city staff? Do we have requests from anybody, the public to comment?
No.
Anybody want to say anything about this? Okay, moving on. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2016-09, amending the pass-through convenience fee for credit card payments at City Hall and decreasing the maximum amount allowed to be charged from $1,500 to $300.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there discussion or comments from the council? Seeing no requests to speak, move the vote. There are monies involved. Are there monies involved in this one? Not really.
Yes, we'll do a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Aaron Cranz.
Excuse me, yes.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Zeitz.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty.
Yes.
Mayor Brown.
Yes.
It's approved 5-0.
Believe the next item on the agenda is the entryway monument. Do we have a report?
I'm actually going to step over to the podium and do this report from there so the council can see the photos displayed on the screen.
I'm going to move to the audience.
Take Ariel out of your way here.
Perfect, okay. So at the November 4th city council meeting, council members approved changing the city's proposed entryway monuments from a 10-foot-tall by 8-foot-wide sign to a more simplified, cost-effective design that mirrored previous entryway monuments. We went ahead and did a public contest on the designs. Those came back to the city council, and the design you can see here on the right was the design chosen. So the city staff went ahead and got quotes from various vendors on different materials to have a more cost-effective design. So we obtained five estimates from various vendors. This first one is Woodland Manufacturing. This sign would be made out of core form, which is an outdoor-rated, rot-and-bug-resistant material with a 10-year warranty. There would be a slight additional cost for mounting posts and hardware. This is an example of the sign made out of core form. This option would be approximately $2,200 per sign, and that is prior to them being installed. We would have to get posts and have somebody install them. The next vendor is Art Sign Works. This sign would be carved or sandblasted out of cedar wood. The approximate costs include posts for mounting. The option would be approximately $2,600 per sign. The third vendor is Watson's Wooden Words. This would be a CNC routed cedar wood, which is then clear-coated for durability. There would be a slight additional cost for mounting posts and hardware, and this option would be approximately $1,500 per sign. The fourth vendor is Wooden Apple Signs. They have three options. All options would have a slight additional cost for mounting posts and hardware. The one that's displayed right now is chip carved into background with one to two colors painted onto it. This option would be approximately $1,800 per sign. This is the same vendor, and this shows chip carved into the background with full natural color. So you can see there are additional colors besides the two contrasting. This option would be approximately $2,400 per sign. And the last from them is a chip carved into the background and includes a raised relief applied with full natural color. So this would be more three-dimensional, it wouldn't just be carved into it. It would have things that come out from the sign. This is approximately $3,200 per sign. And this is a sample from Signs By Tomorrow. This sign would be carved or sandblasted into high-density foam. Their price includes posts, hardware, and installation, and this option would be $5,500 per sign. The city council had originally budgeted $30,000 for this project. And based on these quotes, the estimated cost for two signs would be somewhere between $3,000 and $11,000. One city council has provided direction on which vendor or design it prefers. We'll work with vendors to design the sign, and then we'll return to council with a finalized design and a quote for the installation, mounting hardware, and posts. And any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Microphone.
The first one mentions a warranty, the rest of them do not?
Correct.
Okay, so none of the others do. Do we have any idea how long the wooden signs are supposed to last?
No, I think it depends on the wear and tear. That's hoping they don't get hit. They are in the median.
Right.
Most cedar wood is rot and bug resistant, but they can fade.
So some of them have clear coating. Those ones would last longer. Okay.
Do you, do you have any information on, because the last one includes the poles, so it's kind of hard to compare that with the ones that don't unless you have information on approximately what it would cost for installation, including the poles or a stand or whatever is required?
Depending on what design the city council would choose, staff would go to Charles Abbott, which is our public works crews, and they would determine what best types of posts typically. And my guess is it's just going to be a four-by-four piece of lumber that they go out and they do a post hole and put in. So that's something we could go to our current contractors for.
Okay, this first one was the one we previously got.
Right, that was the design concept that we sent to each one of these vendors, and we asked them to give us an approximate cost on, for their types of materials and their painting and either engraving it or making it raised.
And we don't have any suggestion as far as, rather than posts, putting that sign on a cement block or a small wall or something?
That was one of the options that came to the council, I believe, at the November 4th meeting. And from the discussion, we were directed to look more at a wooden-type sign that was put up. There, there was an option to have a low retaining wall that had some kind of either metal or cement engraved attachment to it.
Now, these would not be backlit, correct?
These, these would not be backlit, but our current landscape lighting would be able to provide light shining onto it at night.
Well, but that was.
Right, that would be if you decided to go with a wall and would run the electrical to it. But you could also, for a less significant cost, do this wood, would it be in front lit, or do a retaining wall with something like that on it and use our existing landscape lighting without running the electrical through the actual wall.
John?
Ariel, would you flip to the Wooden Apple sign with the little sailboat on it? That one? Pretty much. That's not including posts, right?
No, that is not including posts.
Okay. You know, one of the, one of the things I've seen with some other groups is they've gone to the colleges and asked the art departments to come up with something. We've come up with something, and we probably shouldn't back down from that. But while we've accepted that first thing, that you had just had up on the screen, these, these people at Wooden Apple, would they be able to take that one and do it in that color so that we had a blue sky and water and a yellow sun and something so that it's, it's not so bland? If you, if you get, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, and obviously I don't have any of that kind of concept or anything. But while we stick with that design and the posts, if we could make it sharper, brighter, or something that somebody can see, like in this Wooden Apple one, if you switch back to that, that ship thing, that I would really like, to me, I would like that.
Yes, with this, with the full natural color, they would be able to put colors in for the lighthouse in the water and the sky and things, yes.
Yeah, you know, a gray lighthouse or white lighthouse. I don't know.
We can send them a picture of the one we have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than that, I know that's changing what you've done, and I'm sorry about that. But that gives an idea of, to me, of saying, gosh, that would really be, the other one with that would really be cool, in my opinion.
Right, no, if you went with the full color option versus, this option would be exactly like you see it from the previous, the one that's just the round and it's brown with black. If you went with this full color, they would put in the sun and the water, et cetera, in colors.
Do they have any kind of warranty for the color not fading or, I mean, how permanent is that color?
They did not offer a warranty in their quotes back to us, but I can go back to them and request that information.
Colors fade very quickly and. Because, you know, colors fade very quickly, and I'm thinking it would be gorgeous, and I love it especially with the lake and the lighthouse, but if it's in a year, going to be all faded and washed out and yucky-looking, I'd rather go with the original one, just in the two-color, the black with the patina or whatever.
And there's...
The table signs does not say whether it's on cedar. It says...
It says chip carved. And I apologize that Kirsten had done all of these quotes, but she was ill tonight. So I can go back and find out what chip carved means, and we can ask them about a warranty for the colors or about typically how long those colors last.
The chip carved...
I think that's the lettering.
It's... The grooves are... It's grooved wherever you see the lines. You know, that's chip carved. They carve it...
And the letters are all chip carved. But obviously, I don't think you can carve the color things at the top, but you can find that out. And if it fades, there's nothing that's going to say that that brown one's going to fade, and so you get a little tan or...
Well, it's not going to look as yucky. I mean, brown fades to beige.
At that price, you can replace it every three, five years if it fades.
Right, at the $1,800, you mean?
No, there's $2,400.
At the full color, it's $2,400 per sign.
We're going to have to have...
Post and put it in, but you know, that's a minimal cost.
That should be a minimal cost. It should be hourly rate for whatever the public works labor is. I don't have it in front of me. And then the actual posts should be minimal.
What... We're making this decision. What about posting that in the Friday Flyer, what our decision is, with some semblance of what it would look like and having people comment on it or vote on it or something? Is... I mean, is it...
We did that to create it, and I still think we received one person's entry into the contest for design.
We've waited so long on this. Elsinore's looks great, by the way. You've seen Elsinore signs? They look great.
I'm trying to maintain decorum. This is the question period? Okay. Are there any other questions?
Only will you be able to go back to them and ask, first, is it on a more durable wood? Is it on cedar?
Yes.
Do they coat it in any way? I know it doesn't say it, but maybe they have that option?
Right, and a warranty.
Yeah, and what kind of warranty? I would like to see some of their signs now and three years from now. I don't expect it to last forever, but come on, we're out in the middle of this hot desert sun. We don't want that beautiful blue to fade too quick.
Any other questions? Having no questions, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment? Can... I see a couple of heads shaking. You want to go first, Barry?
Back in 2011, 12, this was part of the road project. It was approved by the council. Then they spent a tremendous amount of time and effort evaluating the original proposed signage in there. It was in the budget. That money was subsequently spent differently by a subsequent City Council. I think it would be appropriate to have the original signage reconsidered because, in my opinion, every one of these signs looks like it's been used for an apartment building, not for a bit of paradise. Thank you.
Other public comments?
I might just comment that I think the...
I'm trying to maintain... I'm sorry. I have one goal tonight, and that's to try to maintain our process. So if you can hold off for just a second. Any other public comments? Okay. We've got no more other public comments. Next, as I understand it, do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir. Give me a second, and I'll make a motion for you. I move that the staff enter into discussions and possible contract with Wooden Apple on a sign of color of the type that has been approved by the council, subject to additional discussions regarding fading and design and things that would meet with their satisfaction.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Point of order.
Point of order.
If it comes back that the answers aren't good, that it's on a cheaper wood, that they can't cover it, they won't guarantee it, I don't want this motion to go forward and hire this company without being able to come back and go with point... With option B.
I thought that was my motion, subject to all of that.
I think you need to table it until...
Well, then, if everything is good, the way we've talked about, you know, we could have it up next month, you know? We go on and on with some of these things. Hmm?
Robert and his rules are driving me crazy right now, but we have a motion on the table.
It's actually Mr. Brown.
What's that?
It's Mr. Brown.
Oh, okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Fails for lack of a second.
Hearing, no. Second, we had motion fails for lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
I don't know if this is a motion or if I should just make a suggestion, but...
Oh, I don't know if we can make suggestions here. We don't have a motion.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, and then you can tell me if it's not a motion. I move that we table this until next month and get more information on the color. Personally, I like the first one the best. I think it's more simple. It's more classy. I sort of agree with Barry. The colors are very pretty, but it's just, I don't think it's appropriate for a city monument. I think it looks more like the front of an apartment building or condos or something. I like the patina or copper plate with the black. So perhaps if we get more information on the color, I would be less concerned about it. If we table it till next month and get more information on what the cost would be for installation and what kind of guarantees they would have on the color and the lasting of the color, then we can discuss whether to move forward with that next month or perhaps go with the one that I like.
We have a motion on the table. I have no idea how to restate the motion.
The motion to continue.
Motion is to continue.
With additional information from Wooden Apple Signs on their full color option.
Do I hear a second?
Versus...
No, we've got to have a motion and a second. I'm following the rules tonight.
I'm amending.
That's why I have my hand up.
Yes. Jordan, are you...
I'm amending.
I would second the motion with one caveat, that we revisit what we had previously done for signs some time ago, bring that into the mix with these signs so we can see what we had selected or almost selected a few years ago.
Do you remember the cost?
I do not.
Okay, it was about $30,000, I think.
Well, I think that's what we had budgeted.
It was absurd, the cost.
But if we're going to table it, why not bring back that information as well? And that would be my second.
Oh, we're out of order again. Sorry, Jordan.
Well, he has it.
So we have a motion and a second with amendment, if I understand what's happening, correct?
He's amended a motion, so we would need the original person to accept that, and then somebody can second it.
Does the original mover accept the amendment?
The amendment? No, I do not because I absolutely think it would be absurd for us to even consider spending $30,000 or $40,000 per sign when we need two of them.
For both of them?
Oh, for both of them? Okay, I think it's absurd to spend $15,000 or $20,000 per sign. I think that the range that we're in at the present time...
We're into discussion now, and we don't have a motion on the table because we don't have a motion in a second. Is there another... Are there any other motions?
Welcome to the circus. I move that we table this until next month when we have more information and the council can voice its concerns to the city manager on what information is needed.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
At least we have something for the calendar next month.
Is there discussion? My discussion, I'd like to comment that I'm going to abstain from all of this because I have no taste. But other than that, I think we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, I abstain. Okay, moving on. Let's see, where are we? I've lost everything in all of this.
Permitting short-term rentals.
Okay, short-term rentals, discussion.
This item is for the City Council to discuss and provide further direction to staff regarding potential permitting of short-term rentals. In January, the County of Riverside adopted an ordinance governing short-term rentals, and that prompted councilmember's rights to request that the City Council discuss these types of rentals and whether or not the City Council would like to consider a similar ordinance. The city does have a transient occupancy tax, but that may not apply to single-family homes if they were rented infrequently and incidentally to its use as a residence to the owner or their family. So this is difficult for the transient occupancy taxes to track without registration of short-term rentals. There is no cost to discuss this, and depending on council's direction to staff, the related costs would be brought back to the council with that action.
Okay. Point of order or parliamentary procedure or what? Since this is not an actionable item, is there a different decorum? I mean, do we just...
It isn't.
Well, I don't think we have to wait for somebody to make a motion on a discussion, do we? I mean...
I think all we need to do, may I?
We need to provide direction.
That we ask them to do this or not.
But again, I'm trying to follow the rules here. We ask questions, so what's the decorum here?
In this case, I believe that it would be appropriate for staff, as indicated, that they're seeking direction, to come back with possibly a more formal action. So if the council would like to have a discussion, reach a consensus, that would provide direction to staff.
And at what point do we take public comment then?
I would take public comment after you've asked, Ariel, any questions you may have about her statement.
Okay, questions?
I would like to question whether we could just make a motion to create a city ordinance that would match the Riverside County Ordinance Number 927.
The City Council could discuss that and provide staff with direction to come back with that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
Is the motion... Would you restate the motion?
Oh, excuse me. We have a motion on the table, and so I'm looking for a second on the motion. We've not done public comment on the direct action, but since there's a motion on the table, I assume we have to deal with the motion on the table first.
I can't make a second until I understand what her motion is.
I understand. I'm trying to follow the rules, John. I don't like the rules. My recommendation is we change them. But right now, we've got a motion on the table.
Shall I repeat the motion?
I think we need to... Okay, go ahead.
I move that the City Council create a city ordinance matching the Riverside County Ordinance Number 927 regulating short-term rentals.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Okay, now move into... Motion and a second. Now we need... Are there any comments from the public?
Barry Talbot?
When do we have council comments?
After the discussion from the public. As I understand, Robert.
Hi, Ian. I do believe that the POA currently has some TCNRs regarding short-term rentals, and I would suggest that part of your motion might include consulting with the POA to see if whatever's in this ordinance might conflict with the POA's ordinance. We don't want to have citizens coming to us and getting approval for a short-term rental to turn around and find that the POA is not going to allow it.
I did discuss with Chris, and this was his recommendation. It was the POA attorney's recommendation that we be consistent with the Riverside County, which restricts short-term rentals.
Any other comments from the public?
To answer, Barry, I think this gives the POA another way of tracking to see, because I don't know that they know who's renting out. I think they have a 30-day minimum now, unless I stand corrected, for short-term rentals. But there's... If people don't sign up with the POA, they have no idea how these things are being handled. Whereas if the city was controlling it, they would have another vehicle to travel, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ilers.
Okay, have a public comment?
No.
Dave, go ahead, please. Tell people who you are.
Dave Ilers. To address Jordan, as far as you're right, the idea is to... Because we've got litigation as far as we've got going on with some members, some people have signed up and agreed to not do short-term rentals. Our stance is that it must be 30 days or more. Can't be less than 30 days. And that, so it's... And now that this has come out from the county, you know, there's things in it... I think it's a good proposal as far as the things, the compromises to look at, but... And that's why we need your help in regards to this, also because of the transient tax. Because if you guys aren't charging that, you know, it's got to be a combination of everything, you know, for all this to work. But like some of the fees, you know, it's $250 a year for somebody to do this, which I think is ridiculous because the potential for these people on short-term rentals are 400... You know, do the math. And they're in the, you know, Airbnb and every place else. And we've got staff at the POA that is going through these once a week, looking for people that are saying that they're doing a short-term rental, and then we're sending out letters and things of that nature. But when they're looking at, on Airbnb and for a room, you know, a lakefront waterfront, they're charging $375, $400 a night.
More than that.
Yeah, and some are more. You multiply that out times 300 and some odd days. Are they going to be there, you know, every day? No. But even if they... Six months out of the year, you're looking at grossing $80,000 to $100,000 a year, and all they want to do is charge... I mean, that's why, as far as I'm concerned, disagree with the county as far as $200 a year, $250 a year for a permit. That's my own personal opinion. It's a joke, but the premise is right because of all the guidelines that they have to do and go through. There's permitting, insurance, contact numbers, and things of that nature. So the premise is good, but I disagree with a few things, but...
Okay. Okay, we've had public comments. Are you done today? Are there any other public comments? Are there any other discussion amongst council?
When I spoke with the homeowners association, city general manager, he had consulted with their... Our attorney, and he recommended that we do this. The POA's rules that they cannot do business within the gates prohibits this being able to do these short-term rentals because it's a business. So even though there's a different plan as far as monetarily outside the gates, inside the gates, it would still be protected. Doing this would prevent any kind of movement to say that this is not doing business so that they could get around the homeowners' association rule, which I think is what their goal is to do, is to try and state that it is not a business, and therefore they can do it. So I think adopting the county ordinance is a good step, and then with the backup of the homeowners' association prohibiting doing business and also prohibiting less than 30-day rentals, I think really protects the homeowners' association sufficiently for now, until they think of something else.
Mr. Mayor, we're just asking the staff to come back. We're not passing this tonight, so we don't need to go through this.
There's motion on the...
So I move to call for...
No, there's a motion on the table. There's a motion on the table.
I call for the question.
I don't mean to break the decorum, but if you expect us to come back with something, I need some additional information. As I understand it at present, the POA's position is that fewer than thirty days for a rental violates the CCNRs because it is a business, but there is no explicit prohibition. County ordinance, on the other hand, allows short-term rentals, meaning fewer than thirty days, within certain specific parameters, which would mean that allowing those would be inconsistent with the current POA position unless changed. So what you would get back would be an ordinance that was modeled on the counties that allowed short-term rentals with permits and other health and safety guidelines. Is that what you're asking for?
Apparently this was satisfying to the homeowners association legal department because their rules would prohibit any such action. And now perhaps we need to discuss this with their legal people and maybe we need to modify it, the ordinance, to be more protective of them, but according to Chris Mitchell, he spoke with his attorney and his attorneys recommended that we, we do the same ordinance as the county and that their rules then would protect them.
Do, is the goal to prohibit short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay. That's not what the county does. The county allows them with explicit guidelines.
That, well, the, the ultimate goal for the homeowners association is to prohibit short-term rentals. If, if the city wanted to pass an ordinance that would coincide with the homeowners association, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
Could, could I make a suggestion, not in an effort to move this along, that we do come back to you, it could be the next meeting or it could be a month from now, and that we provide you an explicit sample of what it is the POA is requesting and perhaps what some other cities have done? Because this has been a matter of discussion and controversy in a number of actually neighboring cities.
Yes.
Without work?
I withdraw my motion.
Motion is withdrawn. Okay, are we back to discussion at this point in time?
I, I would like to request that council, or to direct with the approval of council, that our city manager and our attorney work with the homeowners association to find out what type of an ordinance would protect them and be appropriate for the city to create.
There's a motion, is there a second?
No, it's not a motion, it was an action. Request for action.
Okay, if it's a request, then, okay, so it's a, it's a comment at this point.
So it needs to be approved by the council.
Well, if it needs to be approved, then it's a, then it's a motion. Am I wrong?
No.
We volunteered, we understand your direction.
Well, but we've never having a chance to discuss anything yet. I've got a motion on the table.
It's not a motion.
I think in order to discuss it, you need to know what you're talking about.
Well-
I didn't make a motion, I just directed the city manager and the attorney to work with this.
So, is it the consensus of the council? And I would have to say no because I'm not consenting. Does, okay, so we've got it, we've got a real issue here. So since there is not unanimous consent for this, is there a second?
But there wasn't a motion made. If, wouldn't you call for a vote then of the council to see if the majority requests the action?
Have we already given direction?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to give some additional input before we return with an agenda item?
I guess I'm trying to make a point that Robert's rules are crazy, but, you know, we're, you know, if we are restricted to discussion, it's where we can't discuss something unless there's a motion on the table and there's not a clear procedure for dealing with motions intertwined with discussions, we never have a chance to talk like common sense people and try to discuss things over. So what I would like to do is suspend Robert's rules of order and talk to this like it's a, like it's a, like we're real people.
And the mayor is the parliamentarian and can do that unless a majority of the council objects?
Without objection, can we talk like real people? I see no one objecting. Thank you. Trying to, and I too, since we're, since we're, we can talk now. I too talked to the, to Chris Mitchell about this and I'm concerned that we need to discuss, first of all, there's a couple, and I read it, there's a couple of provisions in, in the resolution from the county that I think deserves people to look at before we vote on this. Is this, do we have this in our packet here? The county, the county ordinance? My suggestion is we're going to have a, another meeting shortly and that we have a copy of the county ordinance in here so everybody has a chance to take a look at it before we vote on it. Because I, I found a couple of things questionable in the county ordinance. Now I would like to ask whether or not, since we're out of Robert rules, is there any timeline associated with our passing this ordinance that would impact the, the POA at all? Is there any urgency to this? Can we wait a couple of weeks?
No.
Okay, what I would suggest we do, I'd recommend that we-
We've already got you.
We include a co, copy of the ordinance so that everybody's had a chance to take a look at it before we discuss.
The POA already has their rules in place that protect them, so this would just be strengthening their position by anything the city did.
I understand, but we don't know what we're voting on. We don't know-
No, no, I'm just saying, it wouldn't, it's, it's not anything that's urgent because they already are protected within the gates, so.
I would suggest that we get a count, copy of the ordinance to take a look at before we vote on it.
Good idea.
So that would be my, my recommendation for direction, is there consensus on that direction? And that we postpone table this until the next meeting and we have a, continue this to the next meeting?
That was what I directed the first time.
I'm trying to make a point here about Robert, who's not my friend. Okay, are we, do we have a consensus on direction? Okay. All right. Moving on, I think we're at the city manager comments.
Just quickly, an update on the fire study, I've spoken with Cameron and we should have an initial draft to meet by Monday, the seventh. Take a look at that and see if there's any comments I need to make on that and should have it back by the end of the week. So the idea is to have, to schedule a meeting sometime the week of the fourteenth.
Thank you. City manager comments, the next item on the agenda is council comments, keeping in mind that we've made our comments before, if we were to continue this process, whether you like having two sets of, you know, two different places for council comments, might be time to comment on that now, because we talked about either keeping or changing this new agenda. So, council members, any, anybody would like to comment on anything? And this is the time to, to request, add things to the agenda if they're on, you know, you can do it at any time, but this is the best time.
The reason I requested that we move the council to the front was because, primarily because of public safety, which I felt was something that was important for people. I don't have any problem with moving it to the end again, but I do think that the public safety should be done, maybe under the council's comments in the beginning. I could talk about the public safety and then any other committees or, you know, things that we attend be discussed later. I don't know if we can split it up and do that or not.
I think that's a good idea myself, but, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's it?
John?
Just, I have no other comments other than under comments. I think one of the things that, that cities do is they, they restrict the public comments in time to three minutes and they can also restrict the number of people speaking so you can get to the business of the, of the city, which is everything else, they can send agenda down to the, to the items and so the people can hear that. But what I've seen is not a breaking up of council member comments into two parts, because I don't think we say much that's, that's that, that important, but that, that public comments in many cities have two parts, one in the beginning and one in the end. To have council member comments in two parts, I think is, is restrictive in nature so that the people hear from us when we should be hearing from them and that we should be conducting the business of the city.
Additional comments from the council? I'd like to make a couple. One, I think it'd be a good idea to, let's try to solve the issue of the safety things being at the beginning. I don't know how you want to do that, but I think it'd probably be doable where we have comments on the safety committee at the beginning, since that's of everybody's interest.
We let Chamber of Commerce step up and they're just a clip.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I don't think it's appropriate to have Chamber of Commerce as, as that. They have a right to speak in public comments, just like anybody else, so.
I agree with John.
I think it's, I think it, would there be any, any objection or any reason we can't move the safety comments to the, you know, towards the beginning and then have our comments at the end where they belong? I'm sorry for the editorial.
If you have no, no objections, under number five, special presentations and proclamations, since safety will be a temporary thing one way or another, once we get it fixed, under special presentations, we can probably make our comments there regarding public safety.
Okay, and does that satisfy you if we have, okay, so based on this, I think it's, unless somebody objects, the consensus is to move it back to the original thing with the augmentation of public safety at the beginning? Is that correct? Okay. Okay, so we solve that matter. I think that I've got to make my little things now, if I can find out where I put them.
You want to run the announcement?
Yeah, we're on comments right now. I would like to continue on this decorum issue and come up with some sensible way of holding meetings where we can talk like human beings and I'm hoping you could come up with some recommendation on, to us next meeting on how we can.
Do you want me to bring it up now? As a city clerk in other cities that I've worked for, they've used, it's a condensed version of Robert's Rules of Orders, it's called Rosenberg's Rules of Order, something that the league actually has discussions about during city clerk meetings. They teach all of their clerks for local cities Rosenberg's Rules of Order. So that may be something, maybe we can bring back at the next meeting for the council to review, if that is something they would like to move to instead of Robert's rules, which are more parliamentary.
I, I agree with the mayor, but I, I think you had said earlier though, too, that you wanted a decorum and I thought I heard the city attorney say that a decorum thing should be readdressed again and taken care of.
I think what we'd like to do would be gather up all the possible changes and put them in one.
Is that possible to do by next month?
I don't know, I, I am not familiar with Rosenberg's, I don't know what it addresses, so perhaps if we had copies and you-
So can we at least have discussion for the next month of simplifying this process so we don't break rules, but we still can talk?
And we'd like to know Mr. Palmer's experience in this regard as well.
Okay, you got a chance.
Might be nice to include him.
Yeah, yeah, when we were in Adelanta, we used, we used Rosenberg's. I've never had a city where it's been this formal before.
Well, it's never been this formal before, I was trying to make a point here.
They typically ran it like Rosenberg.
Yeah, they did. So we'll look at that, we'll give you a copy of Rosenberg's, you give us your, your thoughts and we can go from there.
And, and one of the reasons I went through this, just I'm sure everybody knows, is that I like to have rules and I believe in rules and I think rules are important, but they need to be rules that we all agree on and can easily follow. And I hope that I've made a point that this was not that easy and we need to find for some, come out, agree with something that's a little more manageable. Okay. All right, are, we have anything left on this agenda, other than closed session? It is nine oh five and without objection, we'll adjourn to closed session. Oops, hold on, not adjourned, I'm sorry.
She has to announce closed session.
We were checking to see if you needed to adjourn to a date certain, but we don't know the date certain.
You're going back into closed or are you adjourned?
We're going back into closed. And we will adjourn from close and there will be no reportable action.
Adjourning to closed session, no reportable action, thank you out there who witnessed all this.
Did we make this great quick if we're going to take one?
Yeah, go ahead.
I haven't had dinner, no, I was-
I haven't either, by the way. But go ahead, why don't you talk and I'll just hang around the corner. We, we've got one that you can't be a part of.
I'm not coming back in for any of the other ones.
No, so can we move the item two to, we've got two items.